We are live.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the Wednesday, September the eighth, two thousand and twenty-one, special board meeting for the Colton County School District. I would like to call the meeting to order. Thank you to everyone that's in attendance, and thank you to all those that are watching this recorded session. At this time, I ask everyone to please stand for the pledge, followed by the invocation by Reverend James. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to your Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That is my prayer. Miss Grace has finally come today thanking you for another privilege and another opportunity. Thank you, dear Lord, just for the Colton County School District, parents, students, staff, administration. As you come together today, dear Lord, because we've eliminated some times now, dear Lord, we realize that we still need your attention. We turn all of our fears over to you now, and you will help us make the right decision, dear Lord, in the name of our children. Whereas these blessings in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. We'll begin this afternoon's meeting with public input, and we're grateful that we have some parents and stakeholders that are here with us today. The board welcomes the opportunity for you to share information concerning the district. Here are some guidelines for addressing the board. There is nothing in the law or anyone here that prevents you from saying anything you wish. Please try to refrain from commenting on any pending student or employee. Discipline or grievance matter. What you say will become public information, which is subject to the Freedom of Information Act laws. If you choose to call specific employee names, we suggest that you do not. It is the board's chairman's duty to inform you that you could also be subject to defamation laws according to your statements. Present your comments without using offensive language or making comments in a disrespectful manner. School district policy allows you three minutes for comments. Board members and the superintendent are not required to respond to your comments unless they choose, and you can end, we can end your response if they wish. Thank you for completing those cards as you came in. And at this time, I would like to call Crystal forward to the podium. If you would, please just hit the button at the bottom, and that way it turns on the microphone. Crystal, if you would please come forward. Mr. Nelson Sherrill is our timekeeper, and she's over here to my left. If you'll note, she'll give you some notice when your time is almost up, okay?
All I have to say is, I think that parents, we have the choice whether they are masked or unmasked, whether they are virtual or not. We have parents that, that fully believe that they shouldn't wear masks. That's, that's them. We have parents that don't want it. We have children that have asthma and can't breathe with masks on. There are, there are medical reasons why kids can't do it. Um, virtual, if, if the schools are, if the schools feel it is unsafe for the children to be in there without a mask on, then they should not have the school doing it. It should be virtual. Um, it's all up to parent choice.
Ms. Jane Davis, if you please come forward. Yeah, Ms. Sherrill, to my left, she'll let you know if your time or medical reasons.
Good evening. How are you? Um, I actually have one question, and it's a question I've actually asked in the past, but it's been several years, for the board members, the superintendent. My concern is that this comment period is at the very beginning of this meeting, and like this one is at four A.M., at four P.M. A lot of parents are rushing to get here. They're going to miss the comment section, is there not? Is there a reason why this comment section cannot be further into the meeting so that parents actually have a chance to get here? This meeting starts as a comment. They will have a chance to ask a question again for a couple of months. Um, and one of the concerns is because many of the board members, somebody wrote a letter that was sent to a board member, but some of board members do not have contact emails, and people are having a hard time to hold them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. I ask that Chantique Givens, please come forward. Ms. Givens?
Y'all don't answer questions after they were asked. I just wondered first time.
I'll, I'll address that after Ms. Givens' comments. Thank you. Also, hello. My name is James Neekins.
Um, I'm also have more concerns than our questions I come as a parent, and also as a healthcare worker, I'm a registered nurse, COVID nurse. Um, the only concern is that our children are due to return Monday to some, excuse me, practical hours, because I'm not a babysitter at all. But our children are due to return Monday at school. I understand that we are wearing masks. I can tell you as healthcare workers that none of us are taking care of COVID patients in regular cloth masks. Most of our kids are sent to school in cloth masks, and even, um, some of the medical level masks are being sold at like Walmart or Dollar Tree are different. We are all wearing masks like these. These are called N ninety-five. They have different levels of filtration, even the mask that I have on has a higher level equipment tool, N ninety-five. Most of our kids are wearing these, which show no protection at all. Um, I do agree with one of the statements that was made earlier. If the school district feels that it's unsafe for our kids to be back in school, I do, um, would like to ask on behalf of all parents, and not just the board, but all parents and teachers as well, that, you know, there, there is some type of virtual option. I believe we have the resources now. All of the kids are at home with books, internet. Um, so I'm not sure as to why that is not an option. And that's, that's just about it. Just making sure we're doing what's best for our children and is not driven by funds. Um, our kids are our future. If they start to die, I know you guys are aware of the twelve-year-old that was recently extubated, thank God, in U.S.A., I believe, who was a part of our county. But our, like I said before, our kids are our future, so to ensure that their safety is being met, as well as our teachers' safety. But I can tell you right now that the patients that are being seen and affected by this death are very, are of the age of our school teachers. So, um, that's pretty much all. Just make sure the decision that is made is solely based on the health of everybody, teachers, principals, janitors, cafeteria workers, kids included. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Givens. Because it wasn't clear earlier, allow me to read one of the guidelines for addressing the board. Board members and the superintendent are not required to respond to your comments unless they choose. We do, however, have the forms that were submitted, and we have your contact information. So all concerns that will be presented tonight, and they are being presented at the beginning of the meeting, prior to any board action. And that way, the board can hear the comments of those that have provided and completed the forms, in hopes that that will help us in our decisions. That's why it's at the very beginning of the meeting. But we will respond if we need to via the contact information you provided. Thank you. And Ms. Samantha Flatt will come forward. Ms. Flatt?
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me a few moments of your time. I am certainly no scientist or doctor, and no forensic statistics up here for you to debate, but what I am is a born and raised member of this community, a graduate of Volker High School, a Christian, and a mother with a little common sense. I don't need a doctorate to know that children thrive on structure, routine, and discipline, and that you as a board cannot achieve freedom for everybody. But what you can do is provide options for every person to make the decision that is best for them. You have great resource at your disposal. I hired the superintendent with a history in administering a virtual program. She knows how to administer a curriculum. Use that to offer virtual to those that are exposed to greater risks by COVID. For those like my family that are more concerned about the psychological and neurological development of our children and the issues that virtual presents them, those kids need to be back in school. The human interaction is essential to every aspect of our health, both physical and mental. For years now, you all have fought so hard for inclusion for all that you have placed yourselves in the political arena at frontiers. You can continue to forge this unconstitutional path that is ultimately segregating our students by political and economic status, or you can humble yourselves to give back to the basics: math, English, history, focus on providing education. That is all we want. According to a recent N D P C study, which I'm happy to leave with you all to review, it was very informative, our average population will double in size across all grade levels, along, the longer that schools are interrupted. Illness and death, stock and code, school closure, outside of school hardships, less than effective virtual, is negatively impacting an entire generation of students. These students will present a new set of academic, behavioral, and trauma-impacted educational challenges we all have never met. This is not some groundbreaking realization post. This is common sense, not to mention our teacher, staff, and administrators that have had their professional and personal lives opened in, facing new challenges with each and every closure of every one. Mask or no mask, that's a parent's choice. Without a hundred percent participation and accurately fitting each mask, masks or using the correct material, as we've already talked about, the efficiency is insufficient. You are merely wasting resources, increasing anxiety, and killing the morale of our students and employees. We are losing our teachers to charter in private schools, and some students that are fortunate enough, they have that option.
Twenty seconds.
Those schools are enjoying athletic events, their students are thriving, their morale is up, their academics is centered and focused, and it shows. Parents are choosing whether they want to vaccinate their children or not. If they want it, they certainly don't have to be incentivized to do so. They can do it because they believe it's be in the best interest of their children. They, those that are not getting vaccinated also believe they are doing what is in their best interest, and will not be swayed by incentive of any kind. To think they would be a simply demeaning... I literally have thirty more seconds. If we continue down this path of district-wide virtual, we will increase our average population of students, increase our alternatives to unemployment, drastically increase dropout rates, sending negative effects all through our community by limiting our workforce, increasing crime, and teenage pregnancy, discouraging industry momentum, growth, and the list goes on. Tonight, I ask you all to give back to the basics. Tonight, I add a reminder to you all, as your policy reads, that the schools exist for the benefit of the students and the community, that the public schools belong to the people who created them by consent and support them by taxation.
Thank you, Ms. Flatt.
You need to give back to the basics. Give us the option. Let us choose the structure, the routine, and the discipline that works for our children.
Thank you, Ms. Flatt. At, at this time, I'll call Tracy Yopan. If you will, please be reminded that Ms. Sherrill is on my left, and she'll let you know the three-minute time limit that we have. If you will kindly respect the time that the board has, we appreciate the comments that you're sharing.
Hi, it is Tracy Yopan. I have a son that has autism. He has hearing problems. He has pica, which you all should know what pica is. He picks things up and he puts them in his mouth. I have sat last year with him, all year, while he homeschooled, because I didn't want him in the school building, where he could pick up something and put it in his mouth, or get it in his hands, and bring it home to my husband that has a trachea on him, that as soon as it comes home, it goes in his lungs. I want you all to please bring back the choice. I understand there's parents out here, they want to send their kids back. My daughter's one of them. I want to be able to keep my hus- son home. I want to keep him safe. I don't want to lose him, and I don't want to lose my husband. But there is one thing that I do ask for the teachers, because I've sat there all year and I've watched. Don't give the teacher virtual and in person, because they can only do one job at a time. And yes, I've had two awesome teachers, two awesome teachers. I have lost one this year. And I'm just asking everybody, if these kids, these parents want to let their kids go back, let them go back, but give on, uh, give us back our choice. I mean, I, I'm not, I don't want to lose, I don't want to lose my family. And I understand you all have a job to teach our kids. And yeah, my son gets lonely because he doesn't have John Glow or this one to play with, but he's got neighborhoods to kiss that he is playing with. So they're still all together. But I mean, we're all, when I say that, maybe I'm going over my own words, but where I live, we're a close-knit family. We don't let these other kids come in. We're just a little, a little family. And but to send my son to school without a mask, or, or, and my son has hearing aids, he has glasses, and that gentleman knows what I'm talking about, it's hard. Now, now putting a hearing aid on your ear, wouldn't it be hard for you to wear one? And I'm not asking a question, just think about it. Thank you.
Next, we'll have Mr. Joey Lees. Please come forward. Ms. Sherrill is on my left, and she'll remind you at the top.
Hey, I'm just coming to say that I'm one tired grandma. Very, very tired all day through watching seven-year-old to ten-year-old all day long. Was so happy when he went back to school. And also, I wanted to say, did y'all ever seen a mask when a second grader comes home from school and is smiling masks? It's pretty gross. And I'm just one of those people that think that, I don't know about the middle school and high school, that's all different, but at the Cottageville Elementary School, you know, first graders and second graders having to wear a mask all day long, I don't think that's cool at all. And, and I, and I do hope schools want to start back Monday. Is that still on track for Monday, September thirteenth? Well, I'm so glad, because like I said, I'm just tired. I'm here tonight because parents don't get off of work till five, and this was at four. And I, I just, and just wanted to say that when parents are working and there's no school, then it usually falls to grandparents to watch children. And I'm just very, very tired. Over sixty years old, and I just hope when they go back to school, they can stay in school. And I watch the grades plummet, plummet all the way down. I see on that Chromebook one, and that computer screen, I see that children cutting up and misbehaving in the background. I see them. And, and that's not the way to teach children. If you want to keep your kid at home, then that's cool, if you want to, I suppose. But I just like the old-fashioned way, and I think the children should be there in school. Now, thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Ms. Lees. Next, we'll have Chris Davis. Ms. Davis?
Good afternoon. Uh, thank you for allowing me this time, um, to speak, and just address, um, maybe concerns, more than questions. Um, I would hope that we would, um, make a decision based on not monetary factor, but based on, um, what's going to be best for our community and the families that we have. We have lots of multi-generational families that live in one home. Um, I know some people are for masks, some people are not. Uh, the science shows that it does provide some protection, um, and some are very young. I asked that, um, I know the virtual option did close at the end of April last year, but who knew that it was going to be like this? That the numbers in Colton County, Dr. St. Louis County, were going to be triple what they were last year's time. You know, so, yeah, some of us, I had, I didn't choose the option of virtual by the end of April, because I did not know it was going to be this bad. Now, there is no room for me or my family to make a decision about my child being with me and her. You know, um, people worked for all last year. I'm told now, I don't have the option. He has to go back to school. I live with a seven, some year-old parent. I'm in my forties. If he brings something home to one of us, you know, I'm off the act. If it's not me or my mom, it's nobody else. Um, another concern is, I know, you know, it's like, you got some people for the mask, some people are not for the mask. Can we just, please just do what's right for the kids? What's right for the kids? I know we all as adults have our own personal police, political police, but what's right for these children, what's going to be best for them? They're more resilient than, um, give them, uh, you know, acknowledgement for. Yes, I know they've lost a lot academically, um, but they also gain some. This is a generation in technology learning children. We just got to find the people and train them how to do it, and that's what we have to do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. And thank you to everyone that provided comment. Uh, this board acknowledges the concerns that you share, and we also acknowledge the challenges that is school during COVID times. Um, it's been a challenge for us all, and so your participation tonight is appreciated. Um, and we hope that you'll stay around for the remainder of the meeting to get all the updates that we have.
Um, excuse me, I got here late, and I didn't know we were gonna...
There's a form at the entrance that you'll, if you'll fill it out.
Well, I still have a speech to make.
The timeframe has already changed. I mean, it's already passed. I apologize. I'm going to leave your comments.
Well, I was writing over and recording my child, so I would really like to speak.
You certainly may leave your information on the form, but I can't allow, I didn't allow for everybody else. Thank you. At this time, I'll, um, ask for the superintendent's update and the transition from virtual to in-person, or if I've got the battery key. The forms at the beginning of the entrance there.
Yeah, I heard you.
Good afternoon.
Uh, can, can everyone hear in the back? That's the key, you might need to, if you have a mic, to make a little bit of mess.
Oh, holding the mic closer to you.
Yeah. Can, can y'all hear? Thank you. Sorry, I can't hear him.
I'm double masked, so I'm kind of...
Does it sound?
Oh, no, I'm not. I'll wait for a power point. Give us time, just a couple of minutes there. We're going to begin today with a tribute to our frontline workers. It's all step five, and I'd like to draw your attention to our... Hello, school nurses. This is your superintendent, Dr. Allison Penny, wanting you to know just how much you mean to us. We're celebrating you as our frontline workers. Thank you so much for everything that you do. You take care of each and every one of us every single day. Through this pandemic, you have been a role. We know you're alive on the line. But thank you. From our hearts to yours, we love you, appreciate you. Take care.
The Elementary School Principal, Angel Parker, had this to say about her school nurse, Lily Gaylord. Our school nurse, Lily Gaylord, is phenomenal. She goes above and beyond the needs of our students and staff. She works diligently, and she never has complaints about work as she does. She has been super supportive of students, parents, and staff while dealing with the overwhelming concerns that we all face. She doesn't mind calling parents when needed, or going to answer my office to ensure that we are doing what's best for students. We know that her job is very important to us at the College Elementary School, and we greatly appreciate all that she does. Let's go. Black Street Early Childhood Center Principal, Tiffany Pierce, described her school nurse, Toleisha Hill, in this way. Nurse Hill is a true blessing at Black Street Early Childhood Center. She always has a smile and kind word to shake. Her calming presence and ability to manage the many tasks thrown her way during this pandemic are incredible. She cares about not only our students, but our staff as well. She always makes herself available and never complains. Nurse Hill is a rockstar. The Colton County High School Administrative Team said this about Colton County High School nurses, Deborah Daniels and Kimberly Mallow. Our team of Nurse Daniels and Nurse Mallow have been amazing this year, and have helped everyone in the CCHS. These two ladies have worked tirelessly, all while remaining positive and calm in this uncertain and volatile situation. There has never been a time that the role of a school nurse has been so impactful on the day-to-day operations of the school. In the midst of students returning to the building and having to implement our COVID-nineteen safety measures, their professional expertise has been essential to our faculty, staff, and families. They are also valued members of our school board, M T S S team, and have served this role wholeheartedly, even though their time is stretched to the max. Thank you, ladies. We are lucky to have you both on our team. Colton County Middle School Principal, Lorne Lee, said this of her school nurses, Amanda Frank and Linda Frank. Where to even begin in talking about how these two amazing women support Colton County Middle School? The nurses who serve Colton County Middle School will go above and beyond to provide excellent care to our students and staff, from putting on band-aids, stopping blood noses, and holding ice packs. Nurse Frank and Nurse Frank, tirelessly provide help for all who make their way to the nurse's office and on their way. These past few weeks have proven to be one of the most stressful times for our nurses, due to the constant care and assessment of our students and staff in an unprecedented time of a pandemic, while constantly knowing that the health and wellness of our student is held in their hands. Nurse Frank and Nurse Frank handle all that company away with care, grace, and professionalism. We are so very thankful to have them as part of our CCMS family, and look up to them as they are truly on the front line. Cottageville Elementary School Principal, Tashina Allen, had this to say of her school's nurse, Donna Waddell. Nurse Waddell is a constant presence in the lives of our students, faculty, and families. She is caring and compassionate towards all students and staff. She takes the time to build relationships and focuses on the whole child, not just particular injuries or illnesses. Nurse Waddell can be found providing health services throughout the day. She evaluates students for COVID-nineteen symptoms and exposure routinely. Nurse Waddell believes in educating the staff, students, parents, and community partners on COVID-nineteen prevention strategies. She reminds us all that our well-being and well-being is just as important as our physical. Cottageville Elementary School appreciates the passion, love, and support she offers to everyone. Forest Hills Elementary School Principal, Willsey Hamilton, said this of her school nurse, Angie Gillison. We are so appreciative of the dedication that Nurse Angie Gillison displays in caring for our younger hosts. Nurse Gillison also works hard to educate and motivate our staff to earn wellness points for Forest Hills Elementary. She has coordinated wellness walks, as well as working in school garden. We are grateful for her courageous efforts, day in and day out, especially through the COVID era. We are grateful for her courageous efforts, day in and day out, especially through the COVID era. Hendersonville Elementary School principal, Joseph Hollington, said this of his school's nurse, Sonya Nelson. Ms. Nettles is a school nurse at Hendersonville Elementary. She has had her first year and is a wonderful addition to Hendersonville Elementary School family. Her prior experience has been working in the medical field at Colton Medical Center. In the short time that she has been here, Nurse Nettles has proved to be a hard worker and dedicated to the well-being of staff and students. Nurse Nettles is our hero. Northside Elementary School principal, Catherine Benchet, has this to say about school nurse, Melissa West. Melissa West is constantly looking for ways to improve the health and well-being of all Northside faculty, staff, and students. She chairs the Health and Wellness Committee and assists with creating opportunities for supporting not only the physical health, but the mental and emotional health of our Northside family. Her role since the fall of 2020 has depended far more than in previous years. But she is meticulous in keeping daily records of COVID quarantine, positive, and isolated students and personnel. She assists with daily temperature monitoring and is constantly in touch with parents regarding questions they have regarding COVID protocols. She is a true hero in the medical field, and we are extremely thankful to have Nurse West as a member of our Northside family. Thunderbolt Career and Technology Center director, William May, had this to say about this facility's nurse, Judea Pryor. Judea Pryor has been an awesome addition to the faculty and staff of TCTC. When she assumed her role here during the 2020-2021 school year, she was able to help create an effective system for treating both adults and students as they entered the building, and she set up an effective nurse's office and student isolation room. In school year 2021-2022, she has been instrumental in maintaining a mission record on quarantine students. Her conversations with both faculty and students displayed professionalism while at the same time building a greater whole of the community. She is a major asset to TCTC.
Ladies and gentlemen, who want to know just how much you've done? You serve our members, all of our students. You guide and protect us. You give guidance at our medical advisor. Your guidance is our strength. Our resident therapist within you, that special pain. You give guidance to all of our nurses and patients so that they can use your job as a strength. Thank you so much for all of this. We cannot thank you for this much. Just know we appreciate you. Thanks for allowing me to get over.
Mine too. Okay, I forgot, um, before we begin public comment, I'm sorry to interrupt, that Mr. Tim Mayberry, board member, is, um, joining us via phone. Mr. Mayberry, can you please say hello?
Hello.
Thank you. I'm so sorry I did not mention that earlier, but I wanted all those, especially those that, uh, provide a public comment, to know that that board member was also hearing your words. So, thank you, and sorry for interrupting.
That's all right. It's not like trying to do it on... It's not going to happen. Not if you're in a state. Good?
That's right, thank you.
All right, thank you for allowing us to share with you our tribute to our frontline workers. We'll continue that tribute for the rest of this week, um, and we'll, um, pay tribute to all of our frontline workers, you know, they've lived their lives in hard work, you ever seen it? I'll continue with our transition plan from virtual back to in-person. Our plan is to remain open, stay open. Our plan is not to go back to virtual unless the numbers present themselves. I want to just reiterate that, um, the in-person option is, uh, something mandated by the state. Uh, our ability to be able to transition from virtual to in-person is not something that we take lightly. It is something that is governed by our ability to be able to look at the numbers, look at our ability as a staff, look at our ability to be able to transfer our students, and then to be able to look at our transmission of the virus, both in the community as well as in our school, and then take the recommendations that's provided to us by the guidance from our kids, through our guidance from our, um, DHEC, and then make those decisions. Um, we also have to submit a proposal to the state to see whether or not we are approved. We have to have a conversation with the state superintendent as well as with our deputy superintendent for teaching and learning to see whether or not we are allowed to be able to move to a virtual option. So it's not as easy as it sounds to be able to just move and transition back to the board. We want you to be able to make that, um, be aware of that, that option. So we still continue to require masks in our schools. We continue to encourage vaccinations. As you can see, we offer several vaccination clinics, um, throughout the school year. We continue to be able to offer those vaccination clinics. We can offer a vaccination incentive for all of our elementary employees and well as our students. We have a commitment to quality education, whether or not they're virtual or whether they're in-person. And we continue to, 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 um, offer that option for our students. Safety and sanitation protocols, we continue to provide those. I'll go more in detail about those in a few mon, few moments. And then our COVID leave is then extended to December. And then we're exploring the options for virtual learning. Several of the, um, speakers that came up, um, it's a good opportunity for me to be able to address that at this time if you will allow me. When I became superintendent on July 1st, the virtual option was already decided for the students. For us to be a member of the Little Country Association. Um, I accepted that opportunity. Um, it was already closed, and Angel, as one of the parents, um, to know. But since the arrival, I do realize that children do need the option to be able to be virtual or to be able to be in-person. But that option is not my decision alone. That option is to be approved by the state. So I took it upon myself to reach out to the state to see whether or not that opportunity is still presented exactly. If you'll know, the proviso, proviso one-front-one-off thing requires by law for us to be able to offer a virtual option if we so desire for our students. But we can only have five percent of our students in that virtual option. And I'll turn to my chief financial officer for her to provide me that number. How many students would be allowed to be in a virtual option if I decided to go to that option today?
Two hundred and forty-five.
Only two hundred and forty-five children out of five thousand three hundred students would be able to be in the virtual option, according to the state. So I would have to divide that option up between K through twelve for all of those students. Currently, we have how many students in the virtual option, Ms. Williams?
Currently, we have thirty-nine kids in the Little Country virtual option.
Right.
And we have forty kids in the South Carolina virtual.
So I would have to subtract those numbers from the two hundred and forty students that I would be able to have, and then I would be able to open up an option. So it's not that I don't want to offer a virtual option for my children. I have to live within what the state requires for the children to be able to be in the option. So what I have done is I'm pulling together a team so that we can look and open the, the virtual option for those children. But it has to be state board approved, and the state board needs September fourteenth. We're too late for that one, but it needs to end October seventeenth. Hopefully, we'll make it by that term. We'll wait for them to vote, see whether or not we can open it up for the students to be able to make it. Want you to be aware of those. Let's move to COVID updates, the safety issue. We're having additional testing for our students as well as our faculty. Um, we're considering moving our quarantine base of quarantine guidance. Right now, with the fourteen days, DHEC does allow you to do various options, but for the safety of students in the building, if you're vaccinated, it allows you to have various different types of options. So we're considering moving from the fourteen day to the ten day because that would allow for me to have more students in school at a given time without having to quarantine so that they can learn. Okay? And then we're employing a sub-nurse so that that sub-nurse can help with contact tracing. That sub-nurse can also be able to help with calling our parents when we have to quarantine students because you see our nurses are very able to work, being able to contact trace, being able to make sure that they do the temperature checks and working with all of the students, not just for COVID, but for our children with diabetes, our children who have other healthcare needs that overwhelmed being able to do that. So I'm hiring a contract nurse to be able to take care of those, those additional needs. And then continuing to offer our vaccination clinics on a weekly basis. And then examining the opportunity to offer four-tooth pay for our nurses to work in overtime. Their day does not end at four o'clock or four-thirty because oftentimes the contact tracing continues through the evening when they have to examine the seating, the seating, the seating charts from all the buses and the seating charts within the classrooms. They contact with all of those parents. So the work of a school nurse does not end. I have to be able to compensate them who are going above and beyond to be able to take care of our students. So if I can draw your attention to our numbers. While we have had to go to virtual for two weeks, I know that we're at a point where we need to do that. Our bus drivers did not safely transport our students. But now, because we have gone to a virtual for two weeks, our numbers have come down. So if I draw your attention, I know it's a little small for the entire audience to see. Hopefully, you'll be able to see it on the corresponding monitors there. But right now, we have a hundred and sixty-sevens positive cases. And then, um, school totals, we have, um, forty-one there. You can see how they keep following each day and how we have, um, provided those numbers. Our curriculum and instruction update for our return to in-person. It is extremely important for our children to continue to learn. Children have to become productive citizens so that they can have the opportunity to give back, they can have the opportunity to continue their life, and they can have the opportunity to become successful adults. So we have to make some adjustments. We had to extend our time for our grades and our assignments to September seventeenth. So let me explain what that means. Our students, some of them have internet connection at home, and some of them don't have internet connection at home. Those students who don't have internet connection at home and those students who are unable to log in, we're not coming down against them because we put them in emergency closure. Those children have the opportunity to complete all of their assignments and get those assignments turned in by September seventeenth. Just because they did not get it done on the day that it was due, we have extended our opportunity to the September seventeenth. They have to have everything turned in. So because that extension occurs, we've also extended some other things. It would be unfair to a parent and child to send home an interim progress report at the time of September sixteenth. I believe it was September sixteenth, as it was on our original calendar. So today I've granted permission to be able to extend that opportunity to September twenty-first. It allows the teacher time to grade the, the children time to turn in the assignments. Then the teacher time to grade the assignments, get them into our school, and then send the interim progress report home on September twenty-third. So all children can be successful. That's the goal for every child we present on the College of County. Our teachers continue to work with their pacing guides and get those updated. We've had a major session today with our Millland High School. We hired a, a, a consultant that would come in and make sure that all of our children and all of our pacing guides or our teachers are on track so that they are able to, um, meet those state guidelines because we do not want our schools to be on a par or a lose. That's my goal. And then math testing will be, will begin September fourteenth through the twenty-fourth. We had to make that adjustment because we went to virtual learning. So, so that all children would have the opportunity to be back in school the day, get adjusted to be back in school, and then go to the virtual, go to the, um, the math testing. And then our parent conferences, while they were originally scheduled for September sixteenth, we're not moving that date. We're continuing to have those parent conferences. The school will reach out to those, school will reach out to those parents for those particular parent conferences. So we continue to be diligent of, um, about, um, curriculum and instruction and making sure our children are ready to return and provide those accommodations for their return. Our operations update, we continue to provide sanitation, deep clean for all of our schools. Additional death shields were ordered for all of the schools as well as for, um, the quads in all of our cafeterias. We have provided water bottles for every student. Um, if they are, they can go to the office, ask for a water bottle, a water bottle will be given to them. We provide one for every single child in the district. Masks are provided for all students and staff, one of them. Hand sanitizers in all of our buildings, our buses and our schools, a daily deep clean, and then we do temperature checks every single day. Now, let's talk about the expenditures, since there's a big conversation about how we spend the money. So expenditures, we've had lots of money spent on sanitation. All of that money came out of S R two. Our S R one. I have provided the outline here of how much money that has been spent for, uh, all of our sanitation, our PPE supplies, spending in commerce. Uh, we've provided air filters, sanitation, cleaning materials, as well as, you know, we have to give our, 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 um, portion to the private schools as well. So we provide that, um, our equitable services. Air purifiers for our classrooms as well as kitchen appliances. Thermometers, hand sanitizers, sprayers for buses, um, as well as our fluid victory sprayers and sanitizer wipes. So you see the total there, which is a hundred and eleven thousand nine hundred and forty-four dollars and sixty cents. And then eight hundred and eighty-nine thousand one hundred and eighty and eighty-five, and all those purchases are going to be burned. Okay? And that's out of the two million five hundred and forty-seven thousand three hundred and fifty-one dollars that we received on S R one. And then out of S R two, we only spent, we budgeted a hundred and seventy thousand one hundred and sixty dollars and, and, um, sixteen cents. And we have not, um, spent that money yet. We have ordered some additional shields, but we have eight in port, that's why they're going to be rolling. I've also provided you an itemization that you should have. Um, not just giving you the chart, but I've given you all of the pages where you can see the item, I list my list of quantity as well as the number that was ordered and probably the location of which is next. All right, let's continue. And I think we're at the end. Any questions from the board, board members?
I do have one question.
Yes, sir.
Do their shields therefore are body optional or are they required for each student?
The death shields are not an option. The death shields are required in every single classroom. If there's a parental concern with a death shield that a parent can reach out to school, then they'll make accommodations. The death shields should be in every single classroom with every death.
I got one question.
Yes, sir.
With, with the fact that, um, children under twelve can't take the vaccine, and we going back, you know, planning on going back to school, how are we going to handle, handle that situation?
Okay, we encounter the situation in terms of...
Keeping them safe.
Keeping them safe and letting as much social distancing as we possibly can. We're going to have a death shield, we have a death quad, we want to continue to sanitize. We want to continue to sanitize the playgrounds in between, and, um, we're going to continue to work next. So what I can write? Yes, sir.
I just want to say thank you for everything that you guys have done, taking the time out to make sure that we can provide a safe and education for our children in Colton County. I just want to say thank you.
You're quite welcome. I do not take the job lightly. I've got three grandchildren, my two of them are in school every single day, not, not here, but they are in school every single day. And they are wearing masks at school every single day, and they are subjected to the COVID virus every single day. So I'm coming to school every single day, but they will have heart and the children in this district will have heart because I have compassion for being able to do this job. I don't want to see one single child not live on watch.
Thank you, Dr. Katie. Do you have an update on bus drivers? Do you have an update on bus drivers as far as those that are quarantined and those that will be back with us on Monday?
I'll get that for you. As far as I know, all of my bus drivers will be back, but I will have that for you. I'll give it to you in executive session with Warren, as I'm here. I'm sure that's a nice question, but I would definitely have you. Ms. Williams, could you reach out to Mr. Warren and ask him that question about bus drivers for me so that I can add to our family session?
Sure. Any other questions for Dr. K?
Well, we're ready for mine.
Uh, Dr. K, I just want to make sure that this board supports the administrative effort to return to school on Monday, 9/13, from our virtual learning environment back to face-to-face. And we've got a request with the board if there was a motion in support of the administration recommending that we return back to school face-to-face this Monday, 9/13.
And I think we also want to tell parents who does not want their kids back in school that, like Dr. K says, she is working towards making that happen for you. We are doing the best that we can for the children of Colton County, you know? So we just hope that you believe and trust in that.
Your question? No, I asked for a question. Is there a motion to support the effort to return back to school face-to-face, 9/13?
At this time, I leave a motion that we allow superintendent to turn us back to in-person learning on September 13th, 2021. Seven moments.
There's a motion. And the second, is there any discussion? Dr. K, I just wanted to ask a question, and I know it's starting to rain outside, it's hardly here, but I wanted to ask if the, what the threshold might be for parents to understand another return to virtual, and would there be any other considerations by the district for another learning model?
There's not enough consideration in this for another learning model at this time. If you were to look at any other model, it would be a higher model, but we are not looking at any other option. I have the decision to say we may go to another virtual option or another kind of model. At this time, what I want the council to understand is the DHEC does not give guidance for what the threshold is. They leave it upon the district to be able to make those decisions. They did provide a little bit of guidance today, which we'll be looking at. It was just released this morning at 9:00. So we'll be looking at that. I mean, with my executive cabinet, our, we'll be spending several hours looking at those thresholds and maybe that determination for what that would be, and as students, we are able to examine that. But the threshold is a high threshold. It's about 30% of students in quarantine, which is a large number. Right?
Thank you, Dr. K.
You'll be taking, when you start taking names for parents that want their kids to go into virtual?
I was not able to do that until I got state board approval. I'm going to open it up probably once I submit my proposal, and I probably will submit my proposal within the next two months. And then I'll open it up. We'll probably do a survey and see those parents, but I want parents to understand it will be on the first time or server in phase. And it will be for that number. I have so many kindergarten slots, so many first, second, third, and up through eighth grade. And with those slots approved, that's it. I have no way to add any additional ones. So if you don't get in, there's nothing else that I can do.
I have one more question before you go.
And you have to have certain requirements in order to be able to be a part of this.
What happens to a parent who decide that they're not going to send their children back on Monday? What will be the problem?
Our children will be counted out.
Okay.
Are there any other questions or discussion items? The motion has been made and seconded to support the administration's recommendation to return back to face-to-face instruction on Monday, 9/13. All those in favor, please signify or raise your right hand. Mr. Mabry?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, thank you.
I'll take care of it.
Thank you. At this time, I entertain a motion that we enter the executive session. Upon returning to open session, action may be taken by the board on items discussed during executive session.
Chairman Chair, I like my motion of entering to the executive session upon returning to the session, action may be taken by a warrant on the item discussed during this on 4.01 to receipt a legal device related to the Supreme Court decision regarding proviso 1.108 and temporary emergency management program, SC Code 3-4-70A2.
Motion has been made and seconded to enter the executive session. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify or raise your right hand. Mr. Mabry?
Aye.
Thank you. At this time, we're entering into executive session. For those that are watching, please note that there'll be a second part, and for those that are present, note that we will return. Thank you.